Praise the Lord, welcome in everybody. Happy Sunday. Are you blessed to be in His house today? Yes, amen. We got a couple that are feeling blessed. Who else is blessed to be in the Lord's house today? Amen, amen. We're starting our revival services today and we are so excited. We have Pastor Brian Charles with us, who we are so honored to have. He always brings a mighty word, a mighty message, so we're excited. So blessed to have you here. So today we have our service and then we have a service tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. And then the next night, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM. And then Wednesday night, at 7:00 PM. So come out to every service. We are expecting God to move in this place, move in our hearts, move in our community. So make sure you come on out to each and everyone. Praise God. I just have Gord that wants to come up and share something.
Good afternoon. I did it right. After three years, I still want to say good morning. Anyway, just wanted to let everybody remind, last week, Orland was up, made an announcement. What month is this? Pastor Appreciation. We got one person that appreciates our pastor. Oh, everybody appreciates our pastor. And so we really do appreciate Pastor Rachel, Pastor Robert. And in the month of October is the month, just to remind us that we appreciate them all 12 months. Would you agree? Okay, so October 12th is a big day because as we announced last week, we're asking everybody to get a card, sign it, put a personal message in it, and bless them financially. And we will give them, and as you do, there's a box at the back of the door. As you either leave today or come in next week, put it in, and then we'll make the presentation. Now, the key thing about this, it goes directly to the pastors. And so therefore, no one else sees what you say to them. It's your personal message, and it's a blessing to them. And so we look forward to being able to do that next week. And again, we love our pastors, and let's just really appreciate.
And just one more reminder, our Call to Care is doing a juice box drive. Okay, so they go out week after week and bless the homeless in our community. But specifically need juice boxes right now. So if you'd rather give with money, with cash, with e-transfer, please talk to Lori. I don't know if she's in today. Or Diane, Lori, there we are, and Diane in the back there. But big need right now is juice boxes or anything else that you could give. It's so very much appreciated. Amen. Looks like everyone's on their feet, excited for what God's gonna do in this place today. Hallelujah. Let's pray and just welcome Him into our hearts, welcome Him into this atmosphere. God, we are so, so thankful that you meet us here time after time after time. We are so honored and privileged to be in your presence again, God. We thank you so, so much for how good you are and all that you continue to do in us and for us, God. Even the things we don't see, we know that you are so, so good, Jesus. We ask that you just flow into this place right now, like a mighty river, God. Just flow into this place, pour out a fresh wind onto your people, Jesus. Refreshing fire in this place, God. We've come with expectant hearts, not only to receive from you, not only to receive what we need, God. We've come with grateful hearts for everything that you've already done, because you are so good and you are so worthy to be praised. So we praise you with everything that we have today. We thank you, and we're excited to see you move in this place. Amen. Praise God. He's in this place today. Hallelujah. We thank you, Jesus. 'Cause praise is the water, my enemies drowning. As long as I'm breathing, I've got a reason to praise the Lord, oh my soul. Praise the Lord, oh my soul. I praise when I feel it, I praise when I don't. Hallelujah. I praise 'cause I know you're still in control. My praise is a weapon, it's more than a sound. Come on, let's lift it up. And my praise is the shout that brings to every corner. Oh, as long as I'm breathing, I've got a reason to praise the Lord, oh my soul. Praise the Lord, oh my soul. I won't be quiet, my God is alive. How could I keep it inside? Praise the Lord, oh my soul. Praise the Lord. Come on with everything you have, let's praise Him today. Hallelujah. I praise 'cause you're sovereign, praise 'cause you reign. Praise 'cause you rose and defeated the brave. I praise 'cause you're faithful, praise 'cause you're true. And praise 'cause there's nobody greater than you. I praise 'cause you're sovereign, praise 'cause you reign. Praise 'cause you rose and defeated the brave. And praise 'cause you're faithful, praise 'cause you're true. And praise 'cause there's nobody greater than you. Praise the Lord, oh my soul. 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 I won't be quiet, my God is alive. How could I keep it inside? No, I won't be quiet, my God is alive. So how could I keep it inside? I won't be quiet, my God is alive. How could I keep it inside? I'm gonna praise the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, praise the Lord. Let everything that has breath, praise the Lord. Let everything that has breath, praise the Lord. Let everything that has breath, praise the Lord. I'm gonna praise the Lord, oh my soul. Let everything that has breath, praise the Lord. Let everything that has breath, praise the Lord. Let everything that has breath, praise the Lord. I'm gonna praise the Lord, oh my soul. Hallelujah. We praise your name. Hallelujah, let's lift up a shout of praise in this house today. We praise you, Jesus.
I'm calling on the God of jail. Whose love endures through generations. I know that you will keep your love unending. I'm calling on the God who knows it. The one who opened up the ocean. I need you now to do the same thing for me. For me. Oh God, my God, I need you. Oh God, my God, I need you now. How I need you now. Oh rock, oh rock of ages. I'm standing on your faithfulness. I'm calling on the God of Mary. Whose favor rests upon me. I know with you all things are possible. I'm calling on the God of saving. Need a shepherd boy courageous. I may not face good life, but I've got my own giants. Oh God, my God, I need you. Oh God, my God, I need you now. How I need you now. Oh rock, oh rock of ages. I'm standing on your faithfulness. On your faithfulness. Oh my God, I need you. Oh God, my God, I need you now. How I need you now. Oh rock, oh rock of ages. I'm standing on your faithfulness. On your faithfulness. You're healing your children. You're healing your children. You are the same God. You are the same God. You answered prayers back then, and you will answer now. You are the same God. You are the same God. You were providing then, you are providing now. You are the same God. You are the same God. You moved in power then, God moved in power now. You are the same God. You are the same God. You were a healer then, you are a healer now. You are the same God. You are the same God. You were a savior then, you are a savior now. You are the same God. You are the same God. Oh God, my God, I need you. Oh God, my God, I need you now. How I need you now. Oh rock, oh rock of ages. I'm standing on your faithfulness. On your faithfulness. Oh God, my God, I need you. Oh God, my God, I need you now. How I need you now. Oh rock, oh rock of ages. I'm standing on your faithfulness. On your faithfulness. You freed the captives then, you're freeing hearts right now. You are the same God. You are the same God. You touched the lipper's then, I feel your touch right now. You are the same God. You are the same God. I'm calling on the Holy Spirit. Almighty river, come and fill me again. Come and fill me again. Come and fill me again.
What a beautiful name it is. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a beautiful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus. You were the word at the beginning. One that caught the light most high. Your hidden glory and creation. Now we're getting you across. What a beautiful name it is. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a beautiful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus. You didn't want heaven without us. So Jesus, you brought heaven down. Oh, my sin was great, your love was greater. Hallelujah. What could separate us now? What a wonderful name it is. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a wonderful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus. What a wonderful name. What a powerful name. The name of Jesus. 'Cause death could not hold you. The veil tore before you. Your silence opposed of sin and blame. The heavens are open. The praise of your glory. For you are raised to life again. And you have no rival. You have no equal. Now and forever, God, you reign. Yours is the kingdom. Yours is the glory. Yours is the name above all names. What a powerful name it is. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a powerful name it is. Nothing can stand against. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. Hallelujah. Jesus, just begin to lift up the name of Jesus. Jesus, over every circumstance, lift up the name of Jesus. Nothing can stand against the name of Jesus. Lift up the name of Jesus. Oh. 'Cause death could not hold you. And the veil tore before you. And your silence opposed of sin and blame. And the heavens are open. The praise of your glory. For you are raised to life again. And you have no rival. You have no equal. Now and forever, God, you reign. Yours is the kingdom. Yours is the glory. Yours is the name above all names. What a powerful name it is. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a powerful name it is. Nothing can stand against. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. As I walk now through the valley. Let your love rise above every fear. Like the sun shaving the shadow. Like the sun shaving the shadows. Oh. In my weakness, Lord, call me a piece. I'm not enough unless you come. Will you meet me here again? Cause all I want is all you are. Will you meet me here again? I'm not enough. I'm not enough unless you come. Will you meet me here again? You're all we want. Cause all I want is all you are. Will you meet me here again? Oh, meet us, Lord. My arms are open wide, Lord. Hold on your people, Jesus. Oh. Not for a minute was I forsaken. The Lord is in this place. The Lord is in this place. So come, Holy Spirit. Dry bones awaken. The Lord is in this place. The Lord is in this place. Not for a minute was I forsaken. The Lord is in this place. The Lord is in this place. Come, Holy Spirit. Dry bones awaken. The Lord is in this place. The Lord is in this place. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, we feel your presence, Lord. Oh, Jesus. Jesus. Not for a minute was I forsaken. The Lord is in this place. The Lord is in this place. Come, Holy Spirit. Dry bones awaken. The Lord is in this place. The Lord is in this place. Jesus. The Lord is in this place. Oh, we need you, Lord. We need you, Jesus. Nothing else, Jesus. Jesus. Nothing else. Nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. And nothing else. Nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. And nothing else. Nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. And nothing else. Nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. And nothing else. Nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. And nothing else. Oh, nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. Nothing else. Oh, nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. And nothing else. Oh, nothing else. Nothing else will do. I just want you. I just want you. Nothing else. I just want you. I just want you. I just want you, Jesus. I'm not enough unless you come. Will you meet me here again? Cause all I want is all you are. Will you meet me here again? I'm not enough unless you come. Will you meet me here again? You're all we want. All I want is all you are. Will you meet me here again? Worthy is the Lamb who was slain. Holy, holy is he. He sings a new song to him who sits on. Heaven's mercy is seen. So worthy. Worthy is the Lamb who was slain. Holy, holy is he. He sings a new song to him who sits on. Heaven's mercy is seen. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. The one who has risen is to come. Before creation, I sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything and I will adore you. We adore you, Lord. Caught in rainbows of living color. Flashes of lightning and mores of thunder. Blessing and honor, strength and glory and power they. To you, the only who has came. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. The one who has risen is to come. Before creation, I sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything and I will adore you. We adore you. We adore you, Jesus. All the honor and glory, Lord. It's yours, Jesus. Filled with wonder. Ostruck wonder. At the mention of your name. We're filled with wonder. Ostruck wonder. At the mention of his name. We're filled with wonder. Ostruck wonder. At the mention of your name. Oh, Jesus, your name is power. Breath and living water. Such a marvelous mystery. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. The one who has risen is to come. Oh. Before creation, I sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything and I will adore you. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. The one who has risen is to come. Before creation, I sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything and I will adore you. We adore you, Lord. Holy, holy, Lord. So holy to you.
Amen. Let's clap our hands unto the Lord today. Beautiful time of worship. You can go ahead and return to your seats today. And you may be seated if you're in your seats right now. We're going to take a few minutes here just before we receive the afternoon offering. So good to see each and every one of you that have made it out to worship with us today. We thank the Lord for giving us yet another beautiful sunny day in the month of October. It's much easier to rejoice and be glad in the days when there are days are like this. So I want to share a few verses here before we receive the afternoon offering today. I know many times in churches, people want to brush over and pass by the offering like it's an inconvenience to everybody and something that we should quietly do away with as quick as we possibly can. But that's not actually how the Bible teaches us. And if anything is important, then it's something that should also be talked about and something that should be taught and that we should have understanding in. Because the Bible says that my people perish for a lack of knowledge. My people perish for a lack of knowledge. And any place where the enemy can keep God's people ignorant or blinded, unwilling to grow, advance, or come to greater revelation is a place where the enemy can continue to oppress us and hold us back to lesser things than God willed for us to rise to and achieve. So I want to read a few verses today. Brooklyn, you can do your best to follow along with me. 3 John 1:2 says, beloved. Who's he speaking to here? Well, if you consider yourself the beloved, you already know he's talking to you. But not everybody does, so he's talking to the children of God here. Other versions would say brothers and sisters. "I wish above all things that you may prosper and be in health, even as your soul prospers." Prosper and prospereth in the King James, both found in the same verse. I know many times people say, well, I don't believe that God wants us to prosper or I don't believe in prosperity. You've got to understand the ignorance of that statement when you live in a house and have two cars in your driveway and a full refrigerator. Because I promise you, there's many people on the other side of the world and in many different places, even in our own regions, that would look on and say, those people are blessed. They have enough, they have more than enough. But for some reason, we fail to recognize some of these things oftentimes. And because of that, we also fail to give God the thanks to recognize the blessings that we partake of and the things that we have in our life. If you don't recognize that, how do you give thanks? You're always in a place of ungratefulness, wanting God to give you more, but then cringing at every time someone talks about how God could do that in your life or how you could honor God in that area of your life. So when Paul says, "above all things that you may prosper and be in health, even as your soul does prosper," he's talking about like an entire holistic, all the areas of our lives. Cause when you say that word prosper, many times people say, well, there's many things more than prospering than just money. And I say, amen. A lot of people have money, but they don't have joy. A lot of people have money, but they don't have health. A lot of people have money, but they're miserable. But I also know people that have joy and are praying for some more money. And are believing in God for an increase. Or wondering how their family can afford to buy a house one day. How they can excel in business. Is God willing to get involved in that? Is that something that God's willing to be a part of? Or am I going against God if I have any ambitions to be successful? You've got to have understanding and clarity about these things in your own life in order for your hand to actually be open, your heart to be open, so that you may receive from God as God wills to do in your life. I thought that sometimes we could do a prayer line for all those who don't wish to prosper. And we could say for any of those who wish to continue to be broke, miserable, sick, and have all your relationships torn apart, please come to this line and we'll pray the Lord's will be done in your life. Or actually, we'll pray your will be done in your life. Not too many people would come up to that prayer line, would they? Amen. But there's the same people that would say, I don't like that they talk about money in the church. The Bible says of Joseph that he was a prosperous man and the reason was the Lord was with him. It's the presence of God in our life that makes us truly prosperous. And you can have everything else, but if God is not with you, you are not a prospering person. It's his presence in our life that makes all the difference. And when we walk through different things in life, be it even economical crises, when God is with us, we know greater is he in us than he that is within this world. than he that is within this world. And I've continued to say and make this point, and I'll say it again. This is found in 1 Corinthians 9:11, where Paul says, "If we have sown to you spiritual things or sown spiritual things among you, is it too much that if we reap material things from you?" And I like this verse because it shows us that spiritual things are of greater importance, greater significance, more meaningful than material things. That the greatest riches are found in those things. But if God can bless you in those things, why can he not also bless you in lesser things? And if it's important for you to honor God in the greater things, why is it also not important for you to honor God in the lesser things? Where we know that the world tries to, not tries to, but where the enemy tries to keep the world in slavery to a god of money, where money becomes god instead of serving the Lord with all that God has given us. So one more verse as we get ready to receive the offering today. And this is Jeremiah 29:11. And it says, "I know the plans that I have for you." Whose plans are these? Your accountants? No. "I know the plans that I have for you," declares the Lord. Plans for prosperity, and this is the NASB, "and not for disaster, to give you a future and a hope." God wills good things for his people. It's the enemy who would like to keep us ignorant in these areas in our life, in our walk with God. Because money is a tool that God will use for his kingdom. And when his people learn to respond to the Lord in that kind of obedience and faith, it shifts things not only in our lives, but on a much larger scale. And so as we receive the offering today, we receive with joy. We receive it in a heart of worship and gratitude unto the Lord. And if you'd like to participate in the offering today, you can raise your hand for an envelope if you didn't get one on your way in, and Usher will bring you one by. If you'd like to give digitally today, you can e-transfer to theassentchurch@gmail.com. We like to not rush the offering so some of our people come up and pray at the same time. And if you'd like to do that with us today, you're more than welcome. But I'll ask everybody to stand together in the house of the Lord. Let us bless the Lord together in a heart of worship, in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you. As we give our offerings, you said, "We freely give, we freely receive," Lord. But it was with joy that we offer to you, Lord, an offering today in the name of the Lord. Thank you, God, that your faithfulness is present in our lives. And you said, "If we give, it shall be given back, pressed down, shaken together, and running over." And so we just take you at your word today, Lord, and thank you for the pleasure, the pleasure of serving in your army, Lord. And we love you today, in Jesus' name. Amen. You may be seated today. I want to say how great it is to have Pastor Brian Charles with us this afternoon. And he's been a friend to me for many years. He's been a pastor, a friend, a pester. And he's been a blessing in this church. And if this is your first time meeting him, I encourage you to meet him again Monday and meet him again Tuesday and meet him again Wednesday. Because he's here for the next three consecutive days and we're having church every night at 7:00. And though when we do revival meetings, it takes something extra from you as in you giving yourself and giving your time, but it is also a great time of refreshing. And so even though it takes more of your time, it actually refreshes you on an inner scale that the spa can't do. You know, "I'm so tired. I just feel like I need a spa." Spa days are great. Nobody said amen, but I'm sure somebody in here would say it's true. But there's many times in life there's a refreshing that you need that no amount of sleep can give you, no spa day can give you. It needs to be a spiritual work. And that spiritual work can refresh you in all the areas of your life. And so even though you are exuding more energy, you actually feel energized and more refreshed because you gave your time to the Lord. And Pastor Brian's been a great blessing in this house. And the Lord's used him to minister through the word to us very significantly many times, but also through ministry at the altar and the gifts of the Spirit. I've seen people receive words that were so directly connected to their hearts that I believe their lives were forever changed. And so we're just grateful to have him here and we're going to welcome him today. Let's give him a hand as he comes.
Thank you, Pastor. Praise God. It's good to be here again. It's always good to get invited back somewhere, anywhere. Praise God. No, it's like coming home. It's met a lot of good people and I'm glad to see what God's doing here. He's doing great things and just continue, stay the course. Amen? One thing I wanted to share with you, just while we were in worship there, you know God inhabits the praises of his people. Amen? So when you're worshiping God, you come with an attitude of gratitude. Amen? And you know the worship leader's going, "I'm going into the presence of the Lord. Are you coming with me?" Amen? And they did a great job. But when you feel the presence of the Lord start to minister to you, you know, the Lord, he gave me two blessings there while we were in worship. He gave me a vision. And then I thought, "Lord, the word of God says, 'Old men dream dreams and young men have visions.'" Are you telling me I'm young? So anyway. But yeah, and I love that when God, because God speaks to us prophetically if we'll listen to him. You know, he always has something to say. Don't reject him. Be open to the gifts of the Spirit because it's biblical. Anyway, I seen a net being cast out. And you know how when they throw them out, they're wavy and it just kept going and it was going around the world. And the Lord said, "My net of salvation is going out around the world." And he said, "That net consists of prayers and the word that has been spoken to people that will draw them in." Amen? Praise the Lord. And I can't think those things up. God gives them to me and I have to speak them. So keep praying, keep thanking. And I kept thinking of family members because the Bible says, "Believe on the Lord Jesus Christ and thou shalt be saved and thy house." Thank the Lord that your house is coming in. And Jesus is the hook, amen? In the heart that will pull them back. So I encourage you to, I'll be meditating on that and I'm going to share that with our assembly as well. And we're blessed. And another word God gave me, maybe a word of warning for somebody. But I felt the Lord telling me to tell you, and I mean this in love, "Don't put any false expectations on your pastor." You know that? Let him be what God has called him to be. Let him do what God has called him to do. Because you can come with a preconceived idea of what you should be to me, amen? And it's what God should be through him to you, amen? And I just felt that strong urgency in my heart to speak that, amen? And God told me years ago, "You know, you're bought with a price. Be not the servants of men." I'm not here to serve man. I'm here to serve God. And you know, when I'm not, if I'm not obedient to the Lord, I have a hard time sleeping at night. And I want to be obedient to God because God wants to bless people and set them free, amen? And as I was praying about what we were going to be doing here, the Lord, you know, this has happened a couple times recently. I didn't know what I was going to minister on or whatnot. And I prayed to the Lord and left it with him. And he'll wake me up in the middle of the night and he'll give me that thought right away and to give me that vein of what I should get into. And I love that, you know? Because I want to hear from God. I want to do what God wants me to do, amen? Not just have another meeting for having a meeting sake, but I want to have a God meeting. I want God to be God in the house, amen? And if God doesn't show up, the Holy Spirit doesn't show up, you don't have church, amen? We need the Spirit of God to move. And I believe today is going to be a good day. I believe that for some, today's message will strengthen and some will set free and some will go into maintenance mode, spiritual maintenance mode with this because we need to grow in the things of the Lord. But we also need to maintain what we have in the Lord, amen? We need to be good stewards over our spirituality, amen? And so, you know, and God wants me to share a little bit pertaining to offense and just the things that can happen to that. But you know, over the years, I've come to this conclusion that pastoring would be awesome if there was no demons or people. Just kidding, lighten up. I'm going to pray before I get in trouble. Father, thank you for the word of God. Anoint these lips of clay to rightly divide the word of truth. Let my thoughts be your thoughts, Lord. Express yourself in whatever way you see fit, Lord. God be God in this house, Lord. And let our ears be anointed to hear what the Spirit would say. And I thank you that your word will never return void. It always accomplishes that which it is set to do. So we thank you for it, in Jesus' name. And we open up our hearts to receive, not resist, in Jesus' name. And we declare every distraction, distracted, in the mighty name of Jesus. And we welcome the Spirit of God to move in our midst, in Jesus' name. Amen. And if we go to Isaiah 12, verse 3, it says, "Therefore, with joy shall you draw water out of the wells of salvation." Notice it says, "with joy," amen? "you shall draw." It doesn't say, "with misery," amen? "with hurt, with pain, with anger." You know, it says, "with joy." So that tells me that the joy of the Lord is our strength. And it's one of the manifestations of the fruit of the Spirit. But we draw out of the wells of salvation. Your spirit is right here. And when you invited Jesus into your life, you have a well to draw from, amen? And Isaiah is the prophetic minister of the Messiah. He spoke of the Messiah more than anyone, of who he would be, when he would come, and what he would do, amen? And we draw from him. And as I woke up in the midst of the night, the Lord had that word, "offense," come up in my spirit. And he said, "He wants people to draw out of the wells of salvation, but some have clogged the well with offense. Some have clogged the well with unforgiveness." Some, and you know what? Today, we're going to do a little bit of fracking, amen? And you know, 90% of fracking, when they frac, 90% of what they use to frac is water. We're going to use the water of the word to do some fracking, amen? And the other percent is chemicals and sand. But we're going to frac and we're going to clean things out and some things are going to get flushed away, amen? That are blocking the well of salvation from drawing all that God has for us. Because we're saved, we're being saved, and one day, all of our fullness of salvation will come, amen? So we're saved. We got saved when we cried out to Jesus. We're being saved, working out our salvation with fear and trembling. Nobody else can work out your salvation but you, amen? And one day, the fullness of salvation will come. We'll get a glorified body. This corruption shall put on incorruption, amen? Hallelujah. But until then, we have to maintain what God wants for us. And I love this message in one sense, parts of it. It's different for me every time. But because God dealt with me on this and it really set me free and I become aware of it, amen? And you become sensitive. If you were a drug addict, you'd be sensitive to other drug addicts, amen? If you were an alcoholic, you would be sensitive to other alcoholics. People that are wrapped up in pornography and all of this stuff, they can sense that. Well, when you get set free from something spiritually, you can sense it right away. I can sense a religious spirit just like that because I was underneath that, amen? Legalism and all these things. So I can sense that in people and I can bring freedom to them because God set me free of that stuff, amen? And that's what I want. I'm a freedom fighter for Jesus, amen? We all are. We all are. So anyway, and you know, we might hit a little turbulence, but we always come in for a smooth landing, amen? We fly air Jesus, baby, amen? So the enemy wants to clog the wells of salvation so we can't draw what is needed through the salvation plan. And everything we need is in that plan because Jesus is our plan, amen? Through the anointed one, and that's what he's talking of there. So today, we're going to, like I said, do a little bit of fracking. So I want to share a little story with you because I ministered this in a different way when I was in Toronto one time at a Tamil church. And it was on Thanksgiving weekend years ago. And there was a man there that was a former Tamil tagger. Have you ever heard of them? Amen? Well, anyway, he was there and I ministered this message on offense. And this guy was about 6'4", great big tattoos here. Just, he was a gang member, really, is what he was. And he came to the altar crying like a little baby. And he said, "This is the best message I've ever heard in all my life." And the Lord said, "No, it's not." He said he was ready to hear it. Amen? Amen. When you're ready to hear and receive, then the word will cause a manifestation in your life and set you free. Because whom the sun sets free is free indeed. So he was offended and he got set free that day from the spirit of offense which was holding him. And it was like a restraining order on his life that wasn't allow him to enjoy the blessings of salvation or draw from the wells of salvation, amen? And I seen him five years later. He came to our church and he has the tape from that message. And he says, "I listen to this message all the time," he says. And because he got free and he wanted to maintain his freedom in that area because it was just like it catapulted him, amen? Well, really, what it did, it unclogged the well. It fracked the well and the water started to spring forth again, amen? And it was like he was born again, again, amen? Because the enemy wants to sideline us, amen? He doesn't want us drawing from the things of God because we'll be hindered, amen? And that's what he wants us to be hindered from the plan of God. So let's go to Matthew 24. Praise God. And you know, we need to live a life of repentance and a life of forgiveness as well, amen? That's something we live every day. It's in the Lord's prayer. "Forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors." Meaning, this is a daily thing that will happen. You'll have an opportunity to get offended every day. Hello, somebody? You will, amen? But that's why in the Lord's prayer, it reveals to us that I need to be just as forgiving as I have been forgiven, amen? I need to give what I've got from God, amen? And so there's a number of things. Deliver us, amen, from the evil one. God wants us delivered from him and he wants us to be aware that there is an evil one, amen? "He roams about seeking whom he may devour." You know, the smorgasbord is Christians, amen? It's a buffet to him. He's already got the world where he wants them. He wants us sidelined, amen? He wants the anointing off your life. He doesn't want you giving what you have in Jesus, amen? He wants you saved, sanctified, and stuck. That's what he wants, amen? Then you're sidelined. Matthew 24, verse 3. "And as he sat upon the mount of Olives, the disciples came unto him privately, saying, 'Tell us, when shall these things be and what shall be the sign of thy coming and of the end of the world?'" And Jesus answered and said unto them, "Take heed, that no man deceive you; for many shall come in My name, saying, 'I am Christ,' and shall deceive many." There's going to be many that say, "I am Christ, I am anointed," amen? When people tell me how anointed they are, in my spirit, you're telling me how annoying you are, amen? Because I don't have to tell anybody how anointed I am. A tree is known by its fruit, amen? A tree is known by its fruit because it's tapped into the right root, amen? Hello, somebody? Because even Jezebel, she called herself what? A prophetess, amen? So people are just running around telling you what they are. They don't know who they are. They're still trying to convince themselves who they are, amen? You don't have to tell everybody what you are, who you are, amen? God will reveal to your peers who you are, amen? And you will just, an apple tree doesn't have to say, "I'm an apple tree." It shows the fruit of an apple. An orange tree doesn't have to say, "I'm an orange tree." It reveals the fruit, amen? And you're known by your fruit because you're connected to the root, amen? And anyway, "and shall deceive many, and you shall hear wars and rumors of wars." Man, that sounds almost like the times we're living in now. And "see that you shall not be troubled." So we don't need to be worried about what's going on in the world, amen? Are y'all worried? I'm not. Praise God! Because glory is just a heartbeat away, amen? Heaven's just a heartbeat. Well, I'm in this world, but I'm not of this world, amen? We're a royal priesthood, a holy nation. We're a nation above all the nations of the world, praise God, amen? Because we're in God. And it says here, "And kingdoms shall rise against kingdoms." The kingdom of darkness is going to rise against the kingdom of light, amen? "And there shall be famines and pestilence and earthquakes in divers places, unusual places." That's everything we're seeing right now. We're living in the end times. Jesus can come at any time right now. "And all these things are the beginnings of sorrows. Then shall they deliver you up to be afflicted, and they shall kill you." Charlie Kirk, hello, somebody? "And you shall be hated of all nations for My name's sake." It's the name of Jesus, amen? And what does it say in Mark 4? "You'll be persecuted for the Word's sake" because the Word is powerful. The Word brings truth. Jesus is the Word, amen? And he says, "And then many shall be offended and shall betray one another and hate one another, and many false prophets shall rise and deceive many. And because iniquity," which means sin, "shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold; but he that shall endure to the end, the same shall be saved. And the gospel of this kingdom shall be preached in all the world for a witness unto all the nations. Then shall the end come." Amen? So we're going to focus on verse 10 there. But we can see, we're living in that time and we can see what the enemy wants to do because the love of God that he's talking about there, the love of many, is the agape love, the love of God, amen? So he's talking about the church being offended or hurt or, you know, disarmed, I would say too. And it says, "And then many shall be offended and betray one another and shall hate one another." See the progression that takes place there? Once you get offended, you'll betray one another and then you'll even hate one another. But the Bible says we're supposed to be known for our what? Love one for another, amen? Love for one another. And so that word also means scandaloso and it means to entrap. I have, you know, I've been on a trap line before and in Yukon with friends of mine and they run the trap line every day. And I went out with them in the middle of the winter and they found the beaten path of the animals and they set the traps on the beaten path. Well, Satan knows our beaten path and he's going to set something up, amen? He sets something up for us. It's either to be offended or attacked in some way certain. There's lots of challenges that come against me over time and I know it's the enemy at work, but I have to, I have to understand who he is. Jesus, or Paul said, "I would not that you be ignorant," right? I'm not ignorant of His devices. God doesn't want me to be ignorant of Satan's devices and He doesn't want me to be ignorant of the gifts of the Spirit because I need to be aware of what the enemy's up to, but I also need to be aware of what God is doing, amen? I have to be sensitive to what God is doing and God is greater, amen? And so He knows the beaten pathway and don't find it strange that you may get offended at someone close to you or that opportunity may come, amen? Or somebody will get offended at you. But you need to release them right away as well, amen? You need to live in chronic forgiveness. You need to let go because that thing will be like an anchor that drags you around, amen? And I'm saying because God wants to unclog the wells so salvation can flow. There's a hindrance somewhere, amen? But there's also edification and exhortation that will lift you up and keep you aware of these things so when they come, you resist the devil and he flees from you, amen? Amen? There's no room at this inn, Satan, hello, somebody? Amen? And we got to keep him away. We got to, we got to understand the Word of God. But we have to do our part and then he'll do his part, flee. Submit to God, resist the devil and he will what? Flee. You got to do your part and he'll do his part, amen? And that's where we have to be strong in the Lord, amen? It's not all about the pastor doing everything. It's about him equipping you to walk on your own two feet, amen? To stand strong in the Lord. And you know what I call those Christians in our church? Low maintenance Christians. You know why? Because they're maintaining their spirituality. They're working out their salvation with fear and trembling. They know who Jesus is, amen? And they're aware of the enemy and his schemes, scandals and devices, amen? And they live with a shield of resistance to Him and they resist Him and submit to God and he flees, hallelujah, amen? And we're going to go a little, I like to set the plowshare a little deep sometimes, amen? You know what it does? It uproots things, amen? It uproots things. It removes stumps, amen? And then we're going to get rid of the corrupt seed and sow some new seed, praise God, amen? Because that harvest is over, amen? And Satan knows that people are people of repetition, amen? And when an animal's trapped, it's limited to how far it can go. And obviously, its freedom is taken away until death. It means to us, he means to trip us up and offend us and cause us to stumble, amen? And he becomes a stumbling block or an impediment to us in the way upon which another may trip and fall to offend, to entice to sin, to cause a person to begin to distrust or desert, amen? One whom he thought or was trusted or obeyed or concerned for it. Well, you can become offended at family members, anything else. Ministers, ministry, amen? Many will be offended. And that covers a wide range of people. In the world we live in now, everybody's offended, aren't they? And they just get up and say, "Well, good morning. What am I going to be offended about today?" And then it says, "And many false prophets will rise and deceive many." Why? Because you reap what you sow. You're deceived and you're offended and deception, sown reaps deception, amen? See, notice he says after you're offended, you can become bait for the enemy. Hello, somebody? And Satan knows this oh so well. He knows exactly what to do. So after your heart is defiled, you become prey for the enemy and our open game for his deceptions. And that's why Paul said in Ephesians 4:27, "Neither give place to the devil." Why? Because he doesn't have a place unless we give it to him. He doesn't, we make the devil out to be so big, but he's not. He doesn't have a place unless you give it to him. And I'm just here to tell you and encourage, I'm encouraging myself to stay free. I've had even in the last couple of weeks, opportunities to be offended, but I refuse to be offended. I refuse to allow anything to get its tentacles in me, to draw me back, amen? And I can look at people that have been offended at me and I've gone right up to them and I know they're still offended at me and I can look them eyeball to eyeball and say, "I love you." And they're like... Because they're offended and they don't love me no more. Because being a pastor, you go from hero to zero on a regular basis, but you get thick skinned, amen? You get alligator skin, praise God, amen? But you learn, you're going to always have challenges and obstacles, amen? But you got to live in the love of God and you're going to experience things you don't want to experience, but you're going to grow through them. They're called growing pains, amen? But you'll become stronger for them, amen? You'll become steadfast and immovable, praise God, the Bible says. Isn't that awesome? So when you're in a trial, say, "Woo-hoo, I'm going to be steadfast and immovable." Didn't get too many amens on that, but praise God. So like I said, Satan doesn't have a place unless we give it to him. Verse 12 says, "And because iniquity," which means sin, "shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold," amen? And that's the love he's talking about, God's love. And we see sin all around us and it can, if we let what other people do, it can affect us, amen? What other people do does not affect me. I have people get bent out of shape, "Well, they're doing this and he did that and that." I go, "What's that to me?" He can do whatever he wants, man. They can do whatever they want. I'm going to do what God called me to do. I'm going to be what God called me to be. They can be whatever they want to be. Why would that offend me, the way you act, amen? You see, it shouldn't, amen? Because we're secure in Jesus, amen? And if people want help, we're there to help them come out of that, amen? And we need to, you know, don't ever give up on anybody. But if people want to play around and cause trouble, I don't allow drama in our church, amen? I did before and God got a hold of me and He said, "You better look after things because if you don't look after those things, they're going to start looking after you and it's not going to be good, amen? And God had me deal with things, amen? Because they were dealing with people and they were bringing division. They were murky in the waters in the church and the waters were dirty when people came in and the waters needed to be pure and clean, amen? And the job of a pastor is to protect and cherish the anointing so it can flow, amen? It can touch and heal and deliver and have people just get, experience God's presence. That's what coming together is all about, amen? We're coming together. The spirit of a man is a candle unto the Lord. Well, how many candles if they're all lit and they come together and they're burning bright, amen? We're going to bring a greater light, amen? A greater presence of the Lord. And what's that greater presence going to do? It's going to drive out darkness. But if you've got 20 people coming in with a candle snuffer on their head, you're going to have some problems. Hello, somebody? Amen? But that's what Satan wants to do. And that's why it says in James 4:7, hallelujah! And see, James, submit yourselves therefore to God. Always submit yourself therefore to God. This is the leader of the church speaking, right here. James, resist the devil and he will flee from you. If that's not true, then the Bible's not worth the paper it's written on. Sure to get quiet in here, amen? But the Word of God is forever settled in the heavens, amen? And God says, "If you submit to God and you resist the devil, he will flee from you." Amen? I've seen it happen over and over again. You know what? I didn't like it, but I had to stand, stand, stand. But as I was standing, amen? And standing and standing and resisting and resisting and resisting, he had to flee. The dust settled and I was still standing and he was gone. Because he's very persistent. Remember, he attacked Jesus three times? He came to him three times. What do you, is the servant greater than his master? He's going to come to you over and over and over again, but you have to resist him again and again and again. Because we're fighting against principalities and powers and the rulers of this wickedness and spirits in high places that are coming to distort and knock us off the course God has chartered for us. But in Him we live. In Him we move. In Him we have our being, amen? So I'm going to submit to God even when I don't like it and I feel like I'm right. Have you ever thought, "Well, I'm right and they're all wrong and I'm just going to take the high road, baby? Who cares?" Some people's friendships are totally destroyed because they were, "I'm right and they're wrong." Well, what's more important? You being right or them being wrong or your friendship? Praise God, amen? You know? And I mean, I've been around a lot of people over the years and I've had a lot of troublemakers come through our church, amen? And you know, I've put up with them for so long and then I treat them like tax collectors. Hello? I don't hang around with tax collectors, do you? You know, I resist, I love them at a distance. I can love people at a distance. I don't have to hang around. You're going to keep causing trouble and you don't want to come out of it, then you just do your thing. But I'm going to love you at a distance because I'm going to protect my spirituality. I'm going to guard my heart, amen? And I've had some real interesting situations. I could, one guy said, "You should write a book." I'd rather be a living letter, no. Amen? But, so, and listen to this. When the Lord says that, right? His book is not a book of suggestions. Sometimes we serve God with a democratic mindset. His yay is yay, his nay is nay. That means what he says goes, amen? And I'm just going to touch on something. Charlie Kirk, he spoke the truth. He spoke the truth and you know, a lot of Christians didn't like that. And I believe because their hearts got tweaked too. You know that? But he got killed for speaking the truth. Jesus got killed for being the truth. The same Spirit killed them. And when you live the truth, God will set you free and keep you free, amen? And when you speak the truth, the enemy's going to come at you because he knows the power of the truth. And it will set you free. And when you live in the truth, you stay free. That's where I want to live now. I want to live in the truth, amen? I don't want anything but Jesus in my life, amen? I've had different things happen over the years and, you know, good friends turn on you, amen? Satan got in there and just started boom, boom. The next thing you know, you're like, whatever, you know? But God grows through it. I've had people leave the church and come back, amen? I bless people when they leave because, you know, I want them to come back. I want everybody blessed. I want them blessed coming in and going out, wherever they may be. I don't own anybody. You know, I'm called into fellowship, not ownership. I don't own anybody, amen? Isn't that, that set me free, man? I'm in fellowship, not ownership. I don't own, there's pastors that own, they think they own everybody, amen? And you're going to do what I say, buddy boy. You preach the Word and let it have its way, amen? Hallelujah! Hallelujah to you! How do you like me now? Amen? So I'm going to share a little bit about what happened to me because I didn't know anything about offense. And the enemy, Satan tried to get me back into a promiscuous lifestyle, right? That God had delivered me from. But I wouldn't take the bait, right? So then he set a new strategy in place. He thought, "I'll get him offended." And then he started to, my father, who had passed away, who I had a good relationship with, the enemy started to sow seeds in my thought. Yeah, well, all this happened and that happened because your dad was an alcoholic and he wasn't around and, you know, you could have did this, you could have done that, but your father wasn't there and look at what your mother had to do and all this stuff. And he just started, you see, because I was listening to Satan and not God. And I always had a good relationship with my father, but now my father's dead and gone. He's with the Lord and the enemy's got me offended. You know why? Because I was listening to his words and not God's words, and I didn't realize that. But I got a revelation through this experience, amen? And God ministered to me, so then I started playing the blame game. And now Satan's doing all my thinking for me. And even when you get together with your family members and they bring up your father's name, you've got all those words that Satan dropped into your thoughts, amen? That are rattling around when they talk about your father. Because now you have a twisted, warped, perverted idea of who he is because the liar has sowed seed into your mind. Amen? And you can be offended by reading in between the lines. I've had people, I had a lady just the other day, she just started coming back. She'd been in our church for twenty years or more. Her husband and I were good friends, and she just didn't come to church for a while. And I kept texting her and emailing her, and she wouldn't answer me. And I'm just like, "What is going on here?", you know? And then one day I run into her in the mall, and she came up and started crying and hugged me. "I'm coming back to church." And she come back to church. I said, "Everybody's asking for you." I said, "You won't answer my emails, or you won't answer my texts." And they're like, "What the heck, you know, what's going on here?", you know? And then she wouldn't say nothing. She came back to church. Everybody embraced her with love and never... And then the other day, just a couple days ago, she says, "I'm gonna tell you, I was offended." I go, "You're offended, why?" "'Cause nobody that came to my birthday party..." I'm like, "Well, I couldn't, because I was out of town." And I said, "People are busy," you know, like, hello, somebody? But you see how the enemy used that? Broke her fellowship. All those years she's been serving the Lord faithfully, and she wasn't going to church, she was hurt and offended. And all she had to do was, you know, I gave her a big hug, and I said, "Hey, you're reading between the lines. People are busy, too," I said, you know? But you see how the enemy gets you to invert instead of convert? Amen? "I don't care if you come to my birthday party or not." "I'm having a party every day." Amen? Praise God, you know? And so now, when we look into the word of God, and then God set me free of that, but He gave me revelation through it, right? On how easy it was. And another book I read was John Bivier's The Bait of Satan. I read it about three times. Because Satan will keep trying to draw people back into something they've been set free of. But if they don't, then he'll get them offended at somebody. Some religious people, amen, can do that. They're good at it, amen? But anyway, but it says here in James 1:25, "But whoso looketh into the perfect law of liberty and continue therein, he being not a forgetful hearer, but a doer of the work, this man shall be blessed in his deed." See, I'm perfected by the perfect law of liberty. Amen? See, a lot of people, "Pray for me, and I'll get free." No, the perfect law of liberty will set you free. That's what it does. It'll come and transform your life if you allow it, amen? One word from God can shut the mouth of a thousand devils, amen? The word of God will set you free and release you. I've heard of, just recently, different people that got one word from God and their whole paradigm shift in their whole life because they were believing a lie. I was pastoring, and I was doing a wedding, and this one guy that was in the wedding party was all, he was all angry and whatnot, you know? So then, he was one of the best men, and we're walking down the stairs, and everybody's ahead of us, and I says, "Wow." I says, "You okay, brother?" And he goes, "No, God don't like me, and I don't like Him." I'm like, "Wow." This is at a wedding rehearsal. So we're going down the back stairs. I says, "Well, why don't you like God? What could He have done?" He took my baby, my two-year-old. He took him. I says, "You ever think you might be blaming the wrong one?" And it was just like a light went on. I said, he just looked at me, and it was like a revelation. I said, "The devil comes to steal, kill, and destroy, not God. He comes that we have life and have it abundantly. Let him to the Lord right there." And he said, "He hated God for like fifteen years." Amen? And he was born again at a wedding rehearsal, amen? Because he was offended at God. See, Satan will have you. Every time there's a calamity, why would God let that happen? There's cause and effect. Why am I where I am? Because whatever you sow is what you grow. You don't like where you're at? Look at what you're sowing into your life. Amen? Moving right along now. Proverbs 18:19, "A brother offended is harder to be one than a strong city, and their contentions are like the bars of a castle." And I know people who now, they have guarded hearts and want nothing to do with God or God's people. And I was at that Charlie Kirk, there was a memorial service, and I was there at that Charlie Kirk memorial service, and there was one of our saints were there, and I was talking to her, and she introduced me to this man. And then she took off, and we were chatting away. And then I said, "Well, where do you attend, brother?" "I don't go to church no more." Like, "Okay, that tells me everything right there." He's offended at somebody hurt him in the church, so he threw the baby out with the bathwater. Amen? I said, "You need, Jesus is the church. You need Jesus, buddy." Amen? He's just kinda looking at me, and I knew he was stirring inside, right? Because he got hurt, religious hurt, religious sting. Now he's offended, and the devil's using that. And you know what? He's probably got a lot to offer, and he's not utilizing anything that God has given him because he's sidelined. Well, how, a lot of people that say they don't need the church, what do you do when you get somebody saved? I got saved in a church. I got educated in a church, amen? I got discipled in a church, amen? I got convicted in a church. I got healed in a church. I got delivered in a church. I got delivered in the midst of the brothers and sisters in the body of Christ because of the anointing of God. Where are you gonna bring somebody if you lead them to the Lord? You know, while you're making misery in your heart? Amen? You're gonna do the same thing to them. You're gonna give them what you have, amen? Sorry, just saying, amen? If I'm stepping on your feet, you're standing in the wrong spot. But it says here, it says here, "But exhort one another daily while it is called today, lest any of you be hardened through the deceitfulness of sin." Okay, the word hardened there means to be obstinate, settled in rebellion. See, when you're offended, you're settled in rebellion to God's way. You have a false right to be that way, amen? I know, I've experienced it, to God's way. Firmly stubborn, I might add. Inflexible, amen? Unyielding. You have an unyielding attitude. You become unworkable clay. Where did they bury Judas? Potter's Field, right? Why was that? Because he was unworkable clay. Hello, somebody? And their hearts are callous. They become seared. The word seared means to be made callous and unfeeling. You can desensitize yourself to the Holy Spirit. I don't wanna hear that, but I like that, amen? You see that all the time. But remember, where the Spirit of the Lord is, there's liberty. And the Spirit of the Lord woke me up at three in the morning and told me what to minister today, and it's gonna be liberating to somebody if they receive it. And it's gonna be edifying to another, and it's gonna be a good stewardship over somebody else that's gonna maintain what they have and be aware of the wiles of the devil. Amen? Hallelujah. And so, and that means they're just unwilling to let go of their past hurts or pains or hardships, amen? And Jesus said, "Forgive them, for they know not what they do." We have the same spirit as Jesus, amen? And you become desensitized to the Holy Spirit. And you know, I've had people, "God better do something, and He better do it now." I'm like, "Eh." Is that a new prayer? Is that out of the book, Mekiah 3:1? Amen? First fleshalonians, amen? And what happens is your conscience becomes hard, cauterized, amen? And rendered insensitive. And you can become hard, amen? Hard, miserable, amen? Making misery in your heart. You no longer have a sense of conviction as to what is right or wrong. And what is right will even offend your mind, amen? And the person who is speaking truth will upset you. And you know, when something's branded, seared, it burns all the nerve endings so there's no pain or feeling there anymore. And that's what Satan does. He desensitizes you and brands you. But praise God, the Bible says, "We overcome Him by the blood of the Lamb and the word of our testimony." There's always a way back, amen? To flow through the flow of Jesus shed blood, Calvary's cross. And we overcome the enemy by the blood of the Lamb and the word of our testimony. It says in Hebrews 9:14, "How much more shall the blood of Christ, who through the eternal Spirit offered himself without spot of God, purge your conscience of dead works unto serving the Lord?" Because while you're offended, you're just wrestling in dead works all the time. Dead works of death. God wants you in life, amen? But how much more shall the blood of Christ purge your conscience of dead works unto serving the living God? You see, I can put so much word in my heart that subconsciously, when something comes against me that isn't right, I'll just resist it automatically. Hello? And that's what you need to do. You need to keep putting the word in your heart, and it'll show up in your body. You keep putting the word in your heart, it'll show up in your thoughts. "Thy word have I hidden mine heart, that I might not sin against thee." Amen? It'll be a shield, and you'll just know in your heart what's right and what's wrong. And you'll live a life of resistance. You'll live a life of freedom. You'll be a freedom fighter. You'll be able to help people, amen? And set them free, praise God, and minister to them. I've had people tell me, oh, we had one lady, and I feel bad for her. I've worked with her for years, and I kept, you know, she had an abusive husband years ago. Wealthy, rich man, had airplanes, everything else, you know? And she's, you know, she was coming to our church, and you know, they broke up because he was abusive, and she got saved, and I dealt with her. You know, I said, "You sure you've forgiven him?" "Yes, I have. I've forgiven him." And then every time new people come into the church, she'd go have lunch with them, and they'd come to me and go, "Did you hear what she did to her?" I go, "Oh, man. She hasn't forgiven anybody, because out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks it." You keep speaking about it, and you haven't forgiven it. You let go, you let God, amen? You know, when that's gone, it's gone. I asked the Lord, "How do I know I'm free?" He said, "You won't speak in a bad way about it anymore. You'll speak out of standing on top of it in victory as a testimony for the glory of God." Amen? Because we can just, because there's another spirit that will come along with that as well, you know? There's a false spirit of comfort. It's called the spirit of self-pity. The Holy Spirit makes you selfless. The spirit of the enemy makes you aware of yourself, has you focusing on yourself. "It's all about me. It's all about me." Hello? Praise God. He's still gonna have me tomorrow night. Anyway, you know, but that's what happens. We invert. But then the old pastor comes along, because the sheep's hair, the wool's getting over their eyes, and all they can see is themselves, and he has to give them a good sheep shearin'. Amen? So you can see properly, amen? Hallelujah. And so, we wanna live in that freedom. We wanna live in that. And I'm gonna share something with you here that will help you as well. So come continually before the Lord, cross-examining yourself. I heard a preacher say, years ago, I was reading in a book, and he said, "Every time he ministered, he said he died a thousand deaths." And I'm like, "What the heck's that mean?" I heard it again, I heard it again. And then I was just praying about it, and I'm like, "What is..." He would die to anything that would try to hold itself to him. He would die if anything was, and every time I go praying when I'm ministering or anything, I just think of anything that would hinder my walk with God, or God shining through me or moving through me. And I die, the deaths that he's talking about there. I die daily, amen? You see, even Charlie Kirk, he wasn't afraid to die because he'd already died to self, amen? He just graduated to glory, and he got a martyr's crown, praise God. Amen? And if you die to yourself, you become rich, amen? And so come before the Lord daily and cross-examine yourself. Always take personal inventory of your spiritual state. Like I said, cross-examine yourself. Be quick to repent, be quick to forgive, amen? Always take the high road. If you don't, if you don't, you're gonna end up in the spiritual junkyard, sorry to say, but it's true. You'll be that person in the seniors' home, amen, that's sticking your tongue out at everybody? Eating Jell-O, amen? Hallelujah, it's true. Now, listen to this, because this is true. And I put an emphasis on this whenever we have communion. I'm winding down, I'm closing, I believe it. Amen? It's my first closing. 1 Corinthians 11:28 to 32. "But let a man examine himself, and so let him eat of the bread and drink of the cup." That says examine himself, not everyone else, right? "For he that eateth and drinketh unworthily, eateth and drinketh damnation to himself, not discerning the Lord's body." They, you know, they don't benefit from the work of the cross if you don't discern the Lord's body. For this cause, because they don't discern the Lord's body, they don't cross-examine themselves. For this cause, many are what? Weak, sickly among you, and many sleep. That means you're weak spiritually. You could be sick physically, and you could be sleep. Sleep, and that means prayerless. You could be lulled to sleep. Remember Samson? He got lulled to sleep, didn't he, through sin? Well, sin will cause you to go to sleep. You'll be laying dormant is what that means. "For if we would judge what? Ourselves, we should not be judged." You know, if we judge ourselves, we wouldn't have time to judge everybody else. Isn't it funny how easy it is to judge everybody else but not yourself? It's true. I can tell you what's wrong with you, amen? But I don't fix what's wrong with me, amen? Seriously, but that's just the way it is. It's our human nature, and the enemy accommodates as well. He can see, go ask the devil what's wrong with the church, and he'll tell you. Go ask people that aren't serving God what's wrong with the church, they'll tell you, amen? A lot of them say they're a bunch of hypocrites, amen? Well, there's a lot of hypocrites in Walmart. You go there. Amen? But I wanna give people what I got, mercy and grace from God. And that's why we need to keep our hearts pure. Because if your heart isn't pure, you'll see the negative in everything. It'll affect your whole life. Because Matthew 5:8 says, "Blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God." Keep your heart pure, and you will see God in each other instead of the flaws of the flesh, amen? Satan, he wants to do what he did to Samson. Pluck your spiritual eyes out. John 3:3, "No man can see the kingdom of God except to be born again." He wants to shut you down from seeing in the spirit the way God wants you to see. Seeing the potential in each other. He wants you to see the flaws in each other, amen? I'm flawed, but I'm flawsome, amen? And that's what happened. The enemy stalled, he stalled the anointing off of Samson, didn't he? And that sin that he got trapped in and overtaken by caused blinding, binding, and grinding. If you're bound by sin, you'll be blinded to things around you. You ever see, how come they can't see that? What's the matter with them? Amen? Blinding, binding, because you're bound by the enemy to do what he tells you to do, and grinding, because life becomes real hard for you, amen? "I wanna live in the liberty of God." He said, "My yoke is easy; my burden is light." Amen? Praise God. So it's up to me to live in that place, amen? It's my responsibility, amen? Praise the Lord. I'm gonna close out there, but I wanna pray if anyone has anything they wanna lay down at the altar. I'm not here to embarrass anybody. I'm not here to judge you. I love you. I want the best for you. And what God is wanting to do is just release. If you have anything that you need to let go of, you gotta let go and let God. Anything that's hindering you is not worth hanging on to, amen? Anything that's holding you back is not worth holding on to, amen? And I'm just, I'm just a servant of the Lord, and I'm just believing that God is gonna do something for some people here today. I'm not here to, like I said, judge you, condemn you. I love you. I want the best for you. That's why I give you Jesus. And that's why I wanna see, because I know God's gonna do other things. And right now, he's rolling some stones away so the water will start flowing, amen? And you don't know what's gonna happen when that water starts flowing. There's gonna be floods of God's anointing, moving, touching, healing, delivering. But right now, he did a little fracking, and he's trying to blow out anything that would stop the wells of salvation from getting what is needed, amen? Glory be to God, amen? Can we have a little bit of music tonight, or today? Is it tonight or today? Where am I? Praise God. You guys got a great sense of humor, praise God. A little worship, amen? And you know, just let the Lord examine your heart. Welcome the Holy Spirit to examine your heart. And if you're offended at somebody, I'm here, I'm telling you today, God's gonna set you free. You could be offended at a minister, a ministry. You could be offended at your wife. You could be offended at your husband, your mom, your grandpa, your great-great-grandpa. I don't know. No, you could be, there's people that are offended over many things, amen? I'm gonna share a story that just comes to me, because I met a guy from my hometown, and he moved up to where I was, and he was in a church there. And I went to visit somebody at the hospital, and there he was. And I went to visit somebody at the hospital and there he was. He was offended at the pastor. He was offended at the pastor and I was down in the cafeteria and I ran into him. I hadn't seen him in years. And I said, "Well, I heard you got saved and were going to church." Yeah, I was going over there, "That guy, this, that." And he just started running down the pastor, he's full of offense and I'm like, whoa, man, that's not good, you know? The next time I went to the hospital, he was there. Full of cancer. You see, when you're offended, you open the door, seriously. You're in sin and you open the door and the enemy has a legal right to attack you. And that's why I'm not gonna be offended, I'm not gonna, Jesus said, "Forgive them, for they know not what they do." Amen? And when Jesus forgave them, what did he release? The spirit of salvation. Everybody started to recognize who Jesus was. Amen? What happened when Stephen was stoned and he said, "Hold not this charge against them." Saul, the one that consented to Stephen being stoned, in the next chapter became Saul, the Apostle Paul. Because the anointing was released in Lassodim. He had a, he had his Damascus Road experience on a street called Straight. God straightened him out. Amen? So when we're holding, when we're holding things, we might be holding someone else too. Amen? It's serious business, it really is. But you don't know what I've been through, Jesus does. Jesus was touched by the feelings of our infirmities. I used to say to people when I was young in the Lord, "Oh, I know what you're going through." And one day God says, "Quit saying that. You don't know what they're going through. Only they know what they're going through and only they can experience what they're going through. And I have experienced what they're going through, not you. They were brought up differently than you. They've had different life experiences than you. You can't say you know what they're going through. I know what they're going through. And I was touched by the feelings of their infirmities." I'm like, "Okay daddy, I get it." But see, he has to speak to me like that sometimes, amen? Because I'm open to be corrected. Amen? Correction's protection. Hello? There's safety in submission. And I'm gonna do what he says and I'm gonna live in freedom. Amen? Praise God. Hallelujah. You know, the altar of your heart is always open. The stone is being rolled away. When that stone was rolled away, life came forth. And that stone of offense, when it's rolled away, life is coming forth, my friends. You're my healer. You're my friend. A friend that'll never leave me. Hallelujah, Lord. Every hurt, every pain, Jesus. Lord, I thank you right now. Give my brother an embrace with your holy presence, Father. You're his daddy. You're his father. You love him, squeeze out all the hurt, all the pain, Father. This man's never gonna be the same, Father. Let my heart be your heart, Father. Thank you, Jesus. Yes, Lord. Yes, Lord. Father, he couldn't wait to get here, Lord. He couldn't wait to get here, Lord. You woke me up in the night to give him this word and this word is setting him free right now, Father. This man will never be the same. In Jesus' name, Daddy's home. Daddy's home. Father, fill him. Fill him, Lord. Put the robe back on, put the ring back on, put the shoes back on, put the glory back on. Yes, Lord. Every hurt, every pain, now go in Jesus' name. Every spirit that was assigned against him to destroy the plan of God for his life, I arrest you in Jesus' name. I cast you off and out. Go back from whence you came and report failure to your master in Jesus' name. Be free! Be loose! Me, oh God, has called you to be my friend. Let it go, let it go. Every childhood hurt, every childhood pain, every childhood abuse, mentally, emotionally, physically, Father. Go! Your Father is a father to the fatheress. And he's fathering you now where you were neglected and rejected. He's fathering you, he's embracing you, he's loving you. He's your daddy. He's been waiting for you to come home. Be blessed. Be blessed. Restore everything that can't be worn as he knew it, Father. Thank you, Father. Let a new anointing be in him, on him, to him and through him in Jesus' name. Let the freshness of your presence, Lord, let him stand on his enemy. Let him stand on top of the, the, the vices that the enemy had and let him shout victory in Jesus. Let him be a witness to many of the goodness of God. Glory! Glory! God says you're not who you were, you're who you are in Jesus. Going through some intense pain right now, hurt and internal pain. And Lord, I just pray right now that every vice, every scheme, every scandal, every strategy from the father of lies be extracted and uprooted in Jesus' name. Be loose! Be free! Thank you, Lord. He's the head, not the tail, Father. And where the devil has tried to gang up on you, we gang up on him in Jesus' name. And we command him to be loose from you. Loose from your mind, loose from your emotions, loose from your will, loose from your body, loose from you in Jesus' name. Go! 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 Come out! Come out! Come out! Come out! Go! Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. The vice is broken now. The vice is broken. The vice is broken. Stay free. Stay free. Stay free. Get in the Word all the time, man. The more Word you get in, in you, the more Word will show up in your body, in your mind, your will, your emotions. And there's no high like the most high, my friend. I love you, brother. Amen, man? Come on, it's attainable. God's in you, he's on you. He's for you. He wants to be to you and he wants to be through you. Drugs are a false comfort, man. They're a false comfort. You got the real thing everybody's looking for. You got the Holy Ghost. He's your comforter, he's your counselor. Be filled, Lord, or charged in, fresh with your power and your presence. I break every scheme, every scandal, every lie, every lie of the enemy, Father. Every seed of death, every seed of corruption, we declare crop failure over this man's life in Jesus' name. He will be a trophy for the glory of God. He will be a trophy for the glory of God in Jesus' name. And he will set people free in the name of Jesus. He will set people free in the name of Jesus. He will give what he has, freedom, liberty, healing, health. Jesus! He's surrounded by prayer, he's surrounded by love. You can't fail. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Glory, glory, glory. Embrace my brother. Embrace my brother. Embrace him with your love, Father. Squeeze out all the hurt, all the pain, all the things he thinks he needs. He needs you and that's all he needs, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Jesus. Amen? 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 Lift your hands to the Lord. Lift your hands to the Lord like an empty cup and just say, "Fill me up, Lord." Say, "Fill me up, Lord." Praise God. Amen? Glory, glory, glory. Thank you, Jesus. God told me, brother, you're gonna run and not be weary, you're gonna walk and not faint. There's a new anointing in your life, man. Thank you, Jesus. You're gonna be sensitive to God's presence now. You're gonna run and not be weary, you're gonna walk and not faint. Shabba labosimboyot. Hey, brother. The Lord sent the enemies, tried to take you down many times in many ways. But God is with you, God is with you. Amalama simboyoto. You said you've dropped the shield of resistance a few times, but you picked it back up. Thank you, Lord. More, Lord. More, Lord. I know the other heart issues, Lord. I thank you for a, a physical touch of your power, Father. I thank you, Lord, that his heart beats with the rhythm of life in Jesus' name. Thank you for healing and health. Thank you for medical miracle in Jesus' name. Thank you, Father. More, Lord. You know what God says to me? He says, "It's gonna ignite and excite you as you stay focused on it." It's gonna ignite and excite you, my friend. Give me some of that, Lord. Yeah, man, let her go. Every seed of death, go now in Jesus' name. Every lying seed, you are declared crop failure in Jesus' name. No germination, no fruit. The fruit of God manifest in this man's life, the glory of God in Jesus' name. More, Lord. More. Waves of your presence, waves. Hallelujah! Amalama simboyoto. Glory! Glory! Praise God, come on, brother. You know, God has, is reminding me that he has a teaching anointing on your earth. And it'll come to fruition for the glory of God. The Bible says, "Study to show yourself approved before God." Always study to show yourself approved before God. And God will manifest the gift before you, out of you. You're gonna be able to expound the Word of God. And you're gonna exhort people with the Word of God. You're gonna exhort people with the Word of God. And you're gonna be attracted to the Word of God when others are attracted to other things. Glory be to God. Be what God has called you to be in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Lord, I release that into his life in Jesus' name. Glory! Glory! Let's give God a clap off of us, man. And I don't know, I just felt that the Lord was telling me Pastor Rob, Rachel, that you've been through phase one in ministry. And you're now gonna go into phase two of ministry. And I feel the battles aren't gonna be as tense as they have been. You're gonna walk in the fruit of your labors. There will be challenges, but you will walk and see the fruit of your labors for the glory of God. And God is gonna surround you with more people that are for you. And he will accommodate you, he will equip. Every need will be met for the success and the call of God on your lives for the glory of the Lord. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Well, praise God, I'm gonna sign off and come on out tomorrow night. We're gonna go and do a different vein tomorrow night. I just, I have to be obedient to the Lord and I know God did some great things here today. Pray. God will have his way these next few days, I'm expecting great things from the Lord. Bring a friend, bring an enemy, bring a backslider. How about we have some push and pull services? Go push people and pull them in, amen? Get them under the spout where the glory comes in, amen? God will do the rest. God bless you.
As Pastor Brian was ministering the Word, I was considering and just remembering this doll that I used to have. Yeah, I had a doll, it was more like a stuffed animal, more like a stuffed animal, but they call them rag dolls. And I'm telling you, this isn't like yesterday, okay? It was Huckleberry Finn. How many know the expression, "Throw them around like a rag doll"? I was remembering that rag doll that I had, I think I used to like to sleep with him, his name was Huckleberry Finn. But they call them rag dolls because when you move them, they just, there's no resistance, right? Their limbs, everything just flop around. That's what the enemy tries to do in people's lives that haven't built up resistance to him. Resistance to his schemes. Resistance to the spirit of offense. Resistance to the things that the enemy uses to try to ensnare them and entice them. And I just felt like there's some people, even you came in here this week and the enemy's like even as you came today, the enemy's been trying to ragdoll you. Throw you around, ragdoll you. But if you can connect to the Lord today and receive this impartation that was in this house today, God will begin to stabilize you and teach you resistance. Resiliency. Hallelujah. So you won't waver back and forth all the time. Double-minded, unstable in all your ways. Double-minded, maybe I should be here, maybe I should be there, maybe this, maybe back and forth, back and forth. There's a pendulum going back and forth all the time. God wants to show you how to be stable and consistent in the Holy Ghost. Consistent in the Holy Ghost. In your consistency, you are the greatest blessing. Amen? In your consistency, you are the greatest blessing. It's a picture of faithfulness. God is our picture, greatest example of faithfulness. Amen? So I encourage you again, come tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, Tuesday, Wednesday. If you've never really taken part in revival meetings, man, you come every night and something just begins to build and there's something special in the house every night. So God bless you tonight, this afternoon.